I'm kind of the overview, but she is the one that deals with the budget and fully gets it out to her staff. So I'm gonna let her speak to the requests and some of the information in the agenda.
Okay, so I've got some highlights of some of the requests that have come from other departments. Overall, we are looking to do a 1.5 merit increase for full-time staff based on annual performance evaluation. I'm kind of capping it at 1.5 merit when I'm working on it. I have had several departments bring to me that they want the same percentage that they received last year, but when I present it to the county administrator, I will have it in there at 1.5, but also let her know the amount that the department requested. Just because of all the other different things that we are increasing our budget this year, I know that that's not gonna be attainable to do more than 1.5% merit, even if that's possible. So, the sheriff's office, he's requesting four additional full-time sheriff deputy's position. The animal control, additional financing support for part-time salaries for coverage during the weekends, holidays, and vacation. Additional funding for court coverage during increased court dates. General properties, we have found a need to create a full-time director of operations position for facilities, utilities, and building inspections. So that is something that county administrator and myself have already, we kind of threw that into general properties. General properties, we have a facilities manager who has presented the budget request to us, but over the years Bobby of the county administrator has, that person actually reports to the county administrator right now, which is why we're creating a position for a director of operations. So that person will, next year I can go to the director of operations and say, what would you like for your department? Rather than the manager who's kind of trying to manage staff and do a lot, he's wearing many, many hats. So we're kind of assisting this year on that general properties budget. Creation of facilities assistant manager for that department, requesting one additional custodian. One of the other things we're doing this year with the budget also, we are breaking out general properties expense lines for complexes. In the past, we've always kind of just put general properties for all of our complexes in one place for utilities, repairs and maintenance, all that. This year, what we intend to do is actually break down the budget to show citizens, this is what we're spending on each complex for repairs and maintenance, for electric, for just general overhead things as much as we can. We want to be very transparent of what it costs us to have the different locations that we have for our staff. So that will include the 360 complex, the new property we purchased. Station one will actually be part of general properties, so you'll be able to see what it's costing us to have that complex. And the other complexes, I'm sure you're well aware of, administration complex, historic complex, courthouse complex. We're trying to get away from calling it new courthouse and old courthouse, we're just gonna say courthouse complex. But that is something different you'll see with general properties. Finance, I am requesting that we bring in a full-time fiscal assistant position, just as the staff I currently have. Information technology, we are requesting a full-time technician, a technical support specialist. IT has become something that the county is in terrible need of. We've tried to work with a subcontractor for several months and have found that it would be better for us with all of the projects that are coming up, to have someone in-house. We have a new financial software that's coming. We have the E911 project, we have the Motorola project, things like that that, yes, they are just some future IT needs, but we also want to be prepared for anything else after that also. It's a needed position. Commissioner of revenue has requested for one additional full-time deputy commissioner, fire EMS. They will be requesting an additional three firefighter medics. Clerk of court has requested one additional full-time deputy clerk. Regional animal shelter, creation of a full-time regional animal shelter assistant manager position. Parks and rec, creation of a full-time parks and rec assistant manager position. And then we'll get into our general operational requests. Additional support for contracted legal services, as everyone is well aware, we have Sands Anderson as our county attorney, and they are doing a magnificent job. Additional financial support for board of elections to accommodate expected increased workload for no-excuse early voting and for 2020 presidential election. Additional funding for fire and EMS operations. Additional funding for general facilities operation with the additional 360 complex. We will show, you'll see that there is an addition. Additional funding for informational technology department for improved in-house support, as we have talked about, otherwise I mentioned earlier, we're increasing our staff for that. Estimated 15% increase for staff health coverage. An additional funding will be needed for VRS contributions due to hazardous duty employees for fire and EMS department. We know the increase, we will know the increase rate by March 1st. Our capital improvement plan requests. Last night, we kind of went over that with the board. I'll just briefly summarize that. We are working towards building out the courthouse wings, Motorola radio replacements, start building funds to replace fire engine and other fire and rescue related equipment, replacement of rugged laptops for the sheriff's office, implementation of assessor software, deferred maintenance for county complexes, deferred maintenance for King William County Public Schools, purchase of buses and vehicles, security, IT hardware, et cetera, for King William County Public Schools. The outside agency requests, and I just kind of noted some of the, a few things that most outside agencies have just requested level funding, so this is just a few that kind of are a little bit different. This is the first year that we've had a request from the historic society, the historic society of West Point. They've asked for $25,000 for funding and annual donation to help museum, the museum continue and promote tourism in the town and the county. Indian River Humane Society, increased request to assist in the average spending of the agency for the county. Plamongi Regional Library, increased request for increased cost due to merit increase, increased health insurance premiums and service level increase. Quinn Rivers request, they have requested 0.48% of the agency's operating expense. And I do want to note, the county has not funded that agency since fiscal year 2018. And the last page of this is, we really appreciate everyone taking the time to fill out the survey that we have posted online. We did have a total of 808 responses, and we listed the different districts who, percentage-wise, and the number of responses. And just, we tried to put all that together in a chart to kind of summarize that for everyone. Fire and EMS, no one has asked for us to cut that. Sheriff's Department and Fire and EMS, it looks like the citizens want us to continue to increase services on that. Parks and rec, maintain, animal control, maintain, outside agencies, maintain. But this is just some information that I thought everyone would love to see too.
Ila, before y'all get up and start speaking as to what you would like to see the county do, please remember, and I'm sure as you were seeing the pages flip with personnel, 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 these are the requests from the departments. This is not what is being recommended. But we felt it was important that you are aware of what the requests are coming from the departments. Some of these will probably be pushed forward to the board of supervisors as part of the 21 budget. But in many instances, as for the IT, we currently have a contract with Code Blue. We're spending 3,200 a month or 3600 a month for technical support. So what will happen is that instead of new funding supporting this position, if we will redirect those funds to an in-house person. It's, as Natasha made the statement, you know, we are implementing a lot of software. This year, we are going to be implementing the financial system for the county and the schools. That's dire. We are currently using BAI municipal, and that is a very DOS-based, inflexible software package. Our concern is that they will, at some point, just decide they do not want to be in business anymore. And they have not proven themselves to us or to other localities to be the type of company that would give you much time to worry about it. So the finance department has been extensively reviewing financial packages with input from the constitutional officers and from the schools. And so I think transitioning to Edmunds will be much better. It's also gonna make it a little bit more easy to be transparent. With Bright, we can't even run reports across fiscal years, which sounds a little archaic, but that's just the way it is. We're also looking at an assessor's package, because our assessment package that we're currently using is Bright as well. And there are a lot of restrictions and constraints on running reports, on what it will capture, what it will maintain as data that you put in, and then that feeds to our GIS, which is again, us trying to be transparent and, you know, working with economic growth is, you know, having all of the property information out there, when it's feeding from Bright, you're getting limited and sometimes inaccurate information. So the assessor's package will be a great asset. We will have a clean assessment to be able to implement and transfer into that software package. But at the same time, we will also then be able to cancel our contract with Worldview, which will probably be $15,000 or so a year. That will then be redirected towards the cost of the annual maintenance on the assessor's package. So what we're doing is we're trying to not increase the cost to the county, but instead move the funds around to where they're better served. So the IT is critical to have that in-house support. Fire and EMS, last night, the board approved three additional full-time fire medics. That will bring us up to a full time of nine. We will be going back and asking for another three in the FY '21 budget. That will bring it to a total of 12 full-time fire medics. And we believe that that is a reasonable request. Yes, we are growing the career staff, but at the same time, we're still funding the volunteer departments and supporting them, and thankfully, they are supporting us. A lot of our equipment has broken down in Mangahack and Propperton. And the town of West Point has been very forthcoming in allowing us to utilize their equipment while ours is being repaired. So we are trying to make a very cohesive career and volunteer organization for the county. But the fact is, is that the amount of calls that are coming in, we need the staff, because otherwise, our overtime is just daunting. We have about 16 full-time ALS providers that come from other localities. But as we've found with the flu over the last few weeks, a lot of them were not able to make their shifts because they were on-call back to their permanent jobs. So adding us some staff would be very helpful. The animal shelter, I'm not sure if y'all are aware of this or not. I know that the Great Danes made a very big impact, but they have dealt with five seizures from the King and Queen area in the last eight months. And they range from 40 to 50 little chihuahuas, to huskies and some loaves, to 42 Great Danes, I believe. And then the last one that they had was five pit bulls that turned into 25 when two of them had livers. So they have just really been put through the wringer. In fact, the Great Danes pretty much finished off their food budget for the year, and they still had six months to go. But thankfully, you know, people around here are very good about giving donations, and so that is helping offset the cost of the food and additional requirements. Because of course, I'm sure as you would expect, when you have a seizure, all kinds of regulations and requirements kick in in the state. And you have to document and track and weigh and everything, every single animal, every single day. And that's not, you know, that's on top of your normal animals that are coming into the shelter. So, you know, as you see, there is kind of a big ask. We did talk to the board last night about the tax rate. We are gonna have the reassessment finalized at the end of this year, and it's going to cross fiscal years. So part of the fiscal year '21 funding will be at the 2014 assessed rates, and then part of it will be at the 2020 assessed rates. So Natasha has her hands full, coming up with the correct calculations and projections to present to the board, which means they're going to have to forward think about what the tax level is going to be when the assessment is in place. So they're having to think about it a year out. And I think that the board addressed that very well last night. I mean, they took it very seriously and made a recommendation not to drop it to the 1% over which code states, for many reasons, because of the capital needs of the county and the schools. But other than that, I left it up to the board. They're gonna be the ones that have to talk to the constituents. They're gonna be the ones that are gonna see the impact on the taxes. And so we will work with the board to determine what their comfort level is when it comes to the reassessment impacting the taxes. And we probably won't have a good handle on what the board is gonna ask us to include for at least another month. I think we did, we told the board that we'd like them to really think about it, talk about it, ask us for information, meet with those crunch numbers, give them options. We want to make this as informative for them as possible, so that whatever decision they make, whether it's to lower it, or dramatically lower it, the tax rate, so that, you know, they can explain it and justify it, whatever their decision is. And then whatever they want to tell us to do, we're going to make it work, or balance the budget and make sure that it works. So with my long-winded little statement, we'd love to hear from y'all, hear what you think is important in the county to fund, what programs that you like, the ones that you don't like, and just kind of give us some guidance and input. And if you would, come up to the podium and state your name. And if your name is not on the list up here at the podium, please write it down. The board is always interested in the citizens that do show up.
Ladies and gentlemen, Robert Slaughter Bruce Taylor. Couple of questions here. Was the 2020 budget figure that I had is 25.5 million? Is that where we were in 2020? How big, if it is bigger, is the net gain in population this last couple of years in King William County?
The most recent population was 16,900 or so.
Okay. We've been seeing about a 2%, 2.5% growth in population. And we use the welding cooper site as our data collection that we include in the capital.
Given that rather small growth in the population, I mean, that doesn't mean that all of those people who are coming into the county are taxpaying citizens. Population growth can include a whole lot of folks who are not paying taxes. So with that in mind, would it be reasonable to freeze the budget at the current level? That question does, it doesn't need to be answered right this minute, it's a question that I'm asking. If that is done, then reallocate existing resources for all the new hires that are proposed. The county doesn't appear to be growing economically considerably in order to justify all of this new hiring, it seems to me. And with all of the reallocation and all that sort of thing, even with the freeze, even with the reallocation, there's no chance that we taxpayers are gonna get our $10 million back that was taken over all the years where we were being overtaxed? Doesn't need to be answered right this minute, but it's a question that I have. So, we are overtaxed, there's overspending, and we want our money back. Now, may I be excused? Back to you.
Oh, thank you.
Rather sit down and talk. I'm Ben Schumaker of District 4. I've just got a couple, feel mine, I just took a couple of notes, I was just, just to learn and kind of understand what you guys have laid out here. You had mentioned four additional full-time sheriff deputies. I just wanted to confirm, are they actual deputies or are they investigators? Are they just deputies?
Yeah, just.
Okay. And then the manager for facilities and utilities, what's the salary that you anticipate, salary range for that?
For the director of operations position?
Yes.
$75,000.
And the assistant manager position? What? Okay. And just wanted to, so that I understand, so this particular assistant manager position, this is a person that's gonna actually take care of the courts as well as the administration building?
Yes, yes. We hope, what we plan to do is actually have that person look over, they would manage our custodian staff, which is an additional custodian, so because we have 360 property, yes, we're gonna need someone to kind of manage that staff a little closer.
Is any of the staff going to be shared with the schools?
No.
Okay, so they have their own separate system. Then you talked about the creation of a full-time fiscal assistant position.
Yes, our fiscal assistant position, yes.
What is the salary for that?
$35,000.
$35,000.
Right, yeah, I think it is, right, it is $32,000.
Do you, so you currently have, how many people do you have in those roles?
I have my general, this is Tripp, he's our fiscal specialist senior. He takes care of all the general, county, general ledger, grants, things like that. I have an accounts payable person. She also, she's not just accounts payable, I'm gonna take it back. She's certified procurement now with the state. And then I have payroll and H O.
Just quarterly with where I work at, so it's kind of like an accounting department. You got accounts payable, you have, just said.
General accounting, yes, yes.
Do you, are you involved at all with like getting tax, getting the taxes in?
Yep.
So this is strictly just the money that comes and goes?
That's correct. We work with the commissioner and treasurer's office in revenue transmittals, things like that.
And a large part of the budget part in making sure things come out of the right accounts and that kind of stuff?
He, that's what Tripp, he watches it like a hawk.
But it's also the annual financial report, the capital. So all of the auditing that goes through for the schools and the county, and it's all part of the debt service, all those contracts and everything else.
Information technology, what's your salary range for that?
$36,000.
Yeah, it is $36,000.
So there was one in the paper, is that something, last week or whatever, is that something different? Is that a position that was already filled?
That's already been filled.
Okay. Was that already part of the budget, or is that kind of taking up what you were paying for as far as support?
That's basically, some of the support is going to fund that, and then we have another source of funds that we're using to fund that.
And I agree, you guys have a lot going on as far as technology goes. And you mentioned later, under the capital improvements, you mentioned security. Is that specifically talking security cameras, alarms, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, the cameras are, is definitely something needed now, definitely. We also, we're trying to do, give the commissioner's office, treasurer's office a little more security too, and panic buttons and things like that too.
So basically like physical security surveillance?
Yeah, definitely.
Do you guys consider anything about like computer security, cybersecurity, that kind of stuff? Is that gonna be coming out of the IT folks?
The IT, yes, that's another, good point. Another reason why we need an in-house IT person too, is the factor of security.
And where I work at, we have a hard time, I work for a company out of Colorado, and just the resources and security, just trying to find somebody that's just a better, especially trying to pay the salary that they're looking for. The commissioner of revenue, she probably knows this, but I don't. What are their specific duties, and so it's something that's different than what you do, what does the commissioner of revenue do?
The commissioner of revenue actually takes the assessment. She is the one that does the tax book. That's something that September that she does, that rolls out for, that is for everything, right?
The one, September is for personal property.
Just personal property.
And then in marketing and real estate, that tax book. On top of that, do you, land use, real estate, it's licensed, all those things.
So that's a commission, so Sally Pearson, she's the commissioner of revenue, and then this is for an additional deputy to work for her, right? So what does the state provide as far as funding? Is this a commission, does, I mean, does?
The board does pay part of the commissioner of revenue's salary.
Okay, but nothing for a deputy, you were?
Yes, we do get some, I think, you're the position to get partial funding from the conversation board.
She has to have them certified, and then they will pull back when you first start.
Do they have volunteers at the regional animal shelter?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so they have people that actually come there and work. Any full-time staff do they have currently, and they're looking for an additional, what's it, RSA assistant manager?
Regional animal shelter assistant manager. They have two full-time positions. One is an office assistant, animal care tech. The other one is strictly animal care. And then they have some part-timers. But the reality is, is that our managers put in an amazing amount of time. And so I believe at least, especially with the animal shelter, that they need an assistant manager position, so that she can have, I mean, none of the managers here are anything but working managers. They don't have the luxury, just being a manager with the programs folder.
And they're responsible for making sure everything is done correctly and, you know, doing seizures and stuff. I'm almost done. I thank you for the time. Oh, Motorola radio replacements. There was some discussion yesterday where the buses need to get rid of the radios. Would that reduce the total overall cost for this, or is that some?
Yes, it will. So we're looking at $5,000 per radio to replace each radio. So that would take, they have 79 radios in the school buses, so you're looking at that coming off of.
What was the reason for that? I didn't quite understand what the discussion about that was. Why would they want to get rid of the radios that they?
Well, when the radios were purchased about six or seven years ago, we took long-term debt out for them. And at that point, it was determined that the radios needed to be on the buses, because of course, the coverage, and the safety and communication back to the dispatchers when there's issues. For whatever reason, the schools decided they did not want to pay their share. And, you know, our director of finance this year let them know that because of the cost, we pay a number of riding their system. We also have Motorola that provides the maintenance and support of the radios. You know, it's getting higher and higher. And so if they're gonna participate by using the radios, they need to share some of the maintenance costs. They didn't want to do that, so they reached out to the town of West Point, which their bus drivers have cell phones. And so, you know, if the schools want to give back the radios, that's great, that's less radios. the radios, that's great. That's less radios we have to replace. And those are also radios we can take off of the system. That will then reduce our radio cost to the county.
That's all I have. Thank you very much, everybody.
Bill Hughes, I just have, or maybe I should make a comment. When I look at the results of the survey, basically the people responded with the way, I didn't take the survey, I would bet. And however, I find that I agree very much with the way the results came out. Going to the sheriff's, going to the fire and EMS, animal control, that's always very important. People understand that. Parks and recreation and the schools, they're all very important in my thinking. Um, you mentioned assessment. Do you have any idea? I had somebody come by my house, almost a year ago now, and said they were looking at the house for future assessment. It was about a year ago. Um, what do you expect from the results of that assessment? Because if they want to increase the assessment 10%, then what's that going to happen to our tax, our real estate tax? Obviously, one works in conjunction with the other. Do you have any?